September 18th. You all should have the minutes of the previous meeting of September 5th. I had them for review. Make a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I hold. Conference carry. Well, copies of bills. Mr. Treasurer, any additions?
We have one addition this evening. It's business card in amount of $38.78. It's meal expenses for four people going to water school.
Okay.
Make a motion with you. Prove the bills as amended?
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I hold. Conference carry. Mr. Treasurer, support on it?
We do. We have two letters this evening. The first one is from Susan Sullivan. It's, "Dear Board of Trustees, for personal reasons, I am resigning my duties as cleaner for the library effective immediately." And then the second one is from the James Jarrow, President of the Library Board. Dodge Memorial Library Board of Trustees would like to appoint Stephanie Ashmore as cleaner for the library effective September 1st, 2017. And this is informational purposes only.
Right. Library Board takes care of themselves. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna just change the numbers here around a little bit. We're gonna go to item number three. No sense thinking Mr. Bennett standing longer than he has to. I'd like you to come up here, Kim. We have a presentation for you. To Kim Bennett, Kim J. Bennett, congratulations and appreciation for your dedicated service to the residents of the Village of Ross's Point, for Public Works Maintenance, President, 1997, 2017. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Enjoy your retirement, sir. Hopefully enjoy it.
Done.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thanks for your service.
Kim, thanks a million.
Yeah.
Hey, got you on there, Kim.
Thanks, everybody.
It's overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kim.
Yeah.
You want a box?
She has a box.
There's a box on there.
Okay.
Up you. I know you're gonna hang out on the wall soon as you get home.
Maybe not tonight. Bring your project for each half and ten cents, you get coffee. Suppose you sold yours for?
Nope.
I can get one for ten years after. Interesting.
What does that tell you?
Yeah, didn't like it.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.
All right, I think the prudence goes to number two next. We have another presenter here. Our recreation of the year. Yeah, we'll turn up.
Okay, gentlemen. Give you an update on the fitness trail. It's complete as our original plans were set in motion over a year ago. The registration kiosk was built and installed August 23rd. People have been signing into it every day since we put it up. All the comments have been positive. We have had people from Ross's Point, Champlain, Shazie, West Shazie, Plattsburgh, Beadman Town, St. Albans, Albert, Saratoga, and Greece that have signed in to use the trail. And I realize that we're not getting everybody to sign in. So this is just a small percentage of people, but the people that are stopping sign in. We are hitting our target audience. According to those that are registering, we're, most of the people are between 40 and 70 years old. So that's good. And they're using it most often in the morning. So our biggest problem has been underage kids using the equipment. And that would be a problem of the parents not supervising their children. So the equipment is designed to be for age 13 and older. And so when I've been down here, I've talked to the kids and I've talked to even some of the parents who are not focused on their children. But anyway, other than that, nobody's been hurt so far. We had to replace one center post of the arm and leg press because the rubber gasket failed. But that was covered under warranty and the guys fixed it without any problems. So that's done. We put a message board up outside the front here by the electrical box. You'll notice that with a map that was printed on waterproof paper from Clinton County Health Department. So that's up. I met with Excels Blue Crush Blue Shield for a photo shoot on August 30th where they presented us with an oversized check for $3,300 with a grant that they had given us for some of the equipment. The pet waste stations are installed at both ends of the trail. They're being used. Figured out today that there's three different sections that you can pull the bags out of. The bottom two are for the pet wastes. The top one is replacement bags for the container. So if somebody pulls out of the top one, there's why they got a big bag like that with their dog. That's the explanation. So you can fill everybody and get that figured out.
That's a day dog.
Yeah, that's why I put the little dog in there. I met with two evaluators from New York State Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative who were the original people to give us the $30,000 grant to pave the trail. They came up and toured the trail and park on the 14th. So we were up here for about an hour with them. Or I was. I also met with a Plattsburgh State student intern for the Clinton County Health Department who wants to organize and promote our fitness trail as part of her internship. So her plan is to organize some specific outings with people, groups of people, to show them how to use the fitness equipment. So we're in the process of organizing that. She'll be doing that periodically between now and November as part of her... She's a fitness trainer through Plattsburgh State. The lights are being installed this week, I guess, out by the softball field. Those are in the process. And I did apply for another $5,000 grant to try to complete. There's 450 feet along this outside to try to connect the two ends of the trail from Veterans Park over to behind the baseball field. But I didn't get that grant. They only awarded two. They had seven applications and we were not one of them to get that. So that's still down the road. I'll keep looking for more grants if I can, see if we can do that. But it looks like it's out for this year since the weather's probably not cooperating. So. Pickleball court was installed August 25th. We were also given four paddles and a dozen balls, which I have. We plan to have those available for checkout at the library. That's really the only way I could figure out any way that people can have access to them during the daytime since we don't have somebody on the property all day long that can check things out like some of the other recreation departments. So I've already talked to Susan Sullivan and she's already got a plan. So after we have our clinic this weekend, I'll put those in a couple of draw stream bags from Clinton County Health Department and we'll have them available for checkout. So we'll have that. There is a clinic this Saturday from 10:00 to noon for ages 12 and up. Learn how to play pickleball. You don't need to bring your equipment. I expect to see all of you there. So we could go out there and learn how to play pickleball because I don't know how to play either. So Wayne Duquette from Plattsburgh is gonna come up with some of the guys that he plays with and he's going to conduct the clinic. I invited local players. It's on the website, it's posted on Facebook. And I have some flyers that I put around town. I should be one of the village office. And I'll be sending the information to the schools. So.
It's Saturday event?
Saturday from 10:00 to noon.
10:00 to noon.
Mm-hmm. On our brand new pickleball court. Baseball and softball programs were completed the end of July. About 100 kids participated this season, which is pretty much the average from year to year. We had some lock, the dugouts at the end of the season. Softly asked if they could use them, but I was up here one day and caught one smoking. Some young kids smoking in the dugouts when the lock was broken on it. So we immediately locked those that same day and we haven't had any more problems with that. So there are still plans to level the ground out around bases and the home plates at both fields. Hopefully at some point. Fitness in the parks was a big success. We had hip hop dance. 14 kids participated in total. And I arranged for them to do their final performance on the stage, which they were really excited about. Karate, we had 25 kids participate. Both of those programs had to come inside only one day. Partial day to come in because of rain. So that wasn't bad. Luckily, we had the inside. Archery, we had 16 kids participate, which was the maximum amount. They could only have eight per session because that's all they have equipment for. We had a waiting list of about 30. So I'm gonna work with the village and the town of Champlain to see if we can't maybe offer archery at all three locations and that way more kids could participate in it. But it was very popular. If the Foundation for CDPH Funding is available next year, all of the instructors plan to return to conduct the programs. And I will apply again for the grant funding to host those programs. The one conflict that we had with karate and hip hop dance where swimming started, swimming lessons ran about the same time. There was a crossover. So kids had to choose between swimming and the other activities here. But we're gonna have that problem. It takes up all six weeks. Swimming does all summer long. So they have to pick and choose. But we were, we were very pleased. The instructor said that we had the best turnout of all the locations that they had been at of similar sized towns. So I was pleased with that.
Brilliant.
Lot of phone calling to get, make sure people were coming. But that's part of it. So do you have any questions?
Just one, Jim. Just for the people's information. If they go to the library to get the pickleball paddles and balls, do they have to move them then or?
They have to have a library card and it will be checked out. There are other things that you can check out in the library that aren't books, like passes to the Wild Center or the Echo Center. So there will be, like if it's late, they are turned like a dollar a day. If it's not returned at all, charge some of those passes. They charge $90 if you don't return it. So they have to have a valid library card. So I'm hopeful.
They sign up for one when they get there?
If they don't have one, they can sign up for one when they get there. So they can, I'm gonna, they're planning to put two paddles and two balls in each bag. If there's just two people playing, they pick one bag. She'll put some kind of barcode on them so that they can just scan them out. And then they can just clear them in so they don't return because they'll fit in the slot there.
That's a good idea.
So that's, that's really the only way that I could figure out how to do it.
No, that's a good idea. I just wanna make sure that the people know.
And they won't be available at the library until, until after the clinic.
Right, after this.
For now, I'll just bring them Saturday when they come.
Very good. Thank you.
Does your map have your distances on it?
This what?
Your map outside?
Yes, our map. Our map maps, if we have the path outline for the half mile trails marked. We have an outline for a quarter mile trail out there. We've labeled everything on the property where the bathrooms are, where Veterans Park is, where the children's playground is. Each piece of equipment has a name on it with a letter of the alphabet. The pavilion, the hockey rink, where the tennis courts are, pickleball, basketball, soccer, baseball. So if anybody comes and wants to find something, I can just look at the map. And it's a Google map. So it's like a live picture of the, of the grounds.
Excellent.
And that was doing it for Clinton County.
We have, we have a, the trail does connect. Is, is it?
Yeah, you have to use the hill section of the road.
A little tiny piece of the parking lot, that's it.
Well, you have the gravel from the parking lot if you wanna come across that way. Or you have the section of the road which is uneven and...
Helps with balance, I think. Walking, like it helps with your balance.
Well, it can. Some of the comments I... The comments that I'm hearing from people, the reason that they're starting to come up here and walk more, I can't say, every time I've come here, there's been somebody walking. But because our sidewalks are very uneven and bumpy, they like to come here because they don't have to worry about tripping. It's very smooth. So the only section that they have to worry about is the section where the cars drive and the gravel coming through that section. So that's one of the 450 feet I would like to fix. But...
I'd like to see it fixed too.
Would you fix the existing thing or put a separate path?
Put a separate new path.
Like, like the other part?
Right, right, just like that. There's a part that stops right behind the baseball field. There's dots of grass. And so it's about 450 feet. We kinda angle over, go along the ditch, the drainage ditch there, and then connect over by the Veterans Park where it kind of comes up at an angle. So.
Yeah, and that way cars can't run over it too much.
Right, right. So if somebody is in a wheelchair, pushing a stroller, it's not difficult. I know I've seen people pushing the strollers out here and stuff like that. So they end up, most of the time, going all the way around the building because they don't wanna go through the gravel parking lot. So I'd like to do that, but the estimate was about $5,000. So it's a chunk of change.
All right, thank you, man, for all your hard work.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, man. Okay, now we'll go to item number one. We received a letter. And you got it, it was forwarded to you via memorandum on September 7th from our village clerk. It was a request for a modification to local laws specifically foul to people that recently purchased a home in Ross's Point who had chickens where they used to live and they wanted to have chickens in their backyard. The current village code, Chapter 127, Article 4, supplemental regulations, 12025, animals says foul, hogs, cows, horses, goats, or other farm animals shall not be permitted within the village limits. The reason for this was obviously inconvenience to your neighbor, noise, odor. There were a lot of reasons. So in order to, if we were to try to accommodate this, we'd have to amend the, the local law with... And the people that I've talked to in terms of, you know, public response were not very much in favor. What are, what are your opinions on this?
Well, right off the bat, how much does it cost to amend the local law?
Well.
Before you even look at the, you know, I mean...
I'd like to know if anybody's interested even in doing it. Why waste time on what it costs? Nobody wants to do it. We don't have to even... Are you interested in having chickens within the village limits?
No.
Are you, sir?
No.
Are you? Are you, sir?
I give it some consideration.
Okay, well, okay, I guess we can have a vote on it. I, as I see it, there's three mayes and one possible. I, I guess we do it in terms of the, to make a motion that we deny the request for modification to allow foul being raised in the village.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I just don't see any, like, eat no noisy birds. Yeah, you're not gonna have any roosters, but the chickens themselves are noisy and... Well, cockatoo or parrot or something like that. I mean, they, they make quite a bit of noise.
Usually don't have 10 or 20 of them around in your yard.
No, no. I got a lot of blue jays that make a lot of noise, but... Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want it in my backyard.
In your neighborhood.
In my neighborhood or... I think in a village, I mean, if he wants to do this, maybe buy a property outside the village to do it.
I did make inquiries after I got this to, you know, randomly talk to the residents of my... I didn't get any positive response.
Is this the procedure that somebody can ask to amend the local law? We never had before.
There's no procedure.
And they just wrote a letter?
There's no procedure. They wrote a letter.
Okay.
And when he, the resident came last week, he said, "Can I hand this to the clerk down? Would you distribute it?" I said, "Yeah, we put it on the agenda for discussion. Someone has an item that they wanna discuss and it's this particular law." And so, you know, I, I, like I said, it's more than, if we just, you know, give it consideration that we've done and then go from there.
Because typically, if you're changing a village law that affects everybody in the village, you'd be normally accompanied with a petition or something. You know, a group of residents wanna change something or modify it. But just to change the law for one individual because they asked to...
I think that's another reason to...
This is, no accumulation of manure allowed in the proper, unless property composted as well. Putting manure in a pile, compost, it's still gonna have snow.
You can't spread manure, that's another one of the village codes. You can't spread manure in the village. Any animal manure.
I, I just don't see modifying our local law for...
All right, so the motion is to deny the request to modify the local law allowing foul to be raised within the village limits. So I guess since we had some discussion, we'll do it by roll call. Trustee Arnold?
No.
Trustee Bassler?
No.
Trustee Dart?
No.
Okay, four noes. Motion is denied. The request is denied. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Kiosk display Montgomery Street boat launch. I sent that around to you guys. It was a large PDF, but I hope you open it up. Kiosk is quite attractive. It's gonna go east of the bathrooms in that grassy area. It has an introduction to Lake Champlain on it. It has a history of the geology of Lake Champlain. It has the USGS locations and gauges around Lake Champlain. It has a history of the Ross's Point's lake elevation. And it also has a webcam that will, that overlooks the boat launch that can be accessed from anywhere in the world. I mean, you go up and do it. And it's at no cost. So it's, this project's gonna go on for a while and it's no cost to the village. But it's a little fancier version of the signs that you see that we have down there going to the history of the village. And this will focus more on the history of the elevation of the lake and, and then gives, give people an opportunity to look at what the conditions are before they visit. So just wanted to pass that along to you. Do you have any questions on that?
It was a very nice presentation by the government that you forwarded to us.
Yeah, they did a nice job of that.
Good.
They gave a complete description and pictures and everything. So that was pretty, very good. Okay, we have a budget modification. I would ask our treasurer, Jim, to give us a quick explanation for this budget modification, please.
It's just, it's to reflect purchase order number 6287 and which is outstanding as of May 31st. I missed it when I did the previous resolution back last month.
Okay, so just in addition. So if I could get a motion to approve budget modification, Resolution 2017?
Full move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I hold, okay. Thank you, Jim. Full-time civic center position. The one candidate that we had did not contribute as physical and drug testing is required, so we had none. I was just advised, from the time I left the office during meeting, our village clerk received another application, which has been forwarded to civil service. And I'm told that based on, on the village clerk's review of it, there's a very good possibility that that person will be qualified by civil service so we can take a closer look and, and interview. We, I'd sent you a September 15th email about the situation making ice. They did start the compressors today as they had planned. The compressors were 300 pounds low on ammonia. And we had to purchase that, which we normally are low a couple hundred pounds, but that was $1,500. Normally that would've come out of the miscellaneous fund, but we had cut that and put it back in the general fund earlier in the year. We're gonna have to redo that. We can't make ice without the ammonia. And we need four people starting on Wednesday, 15 minutes every hour to drag the hoses and start to layer the ice. Depends how warm it stays, how fast the ice builds up. Right now, the wastewater treatment plant is able to provide a laborer and one of their operators to come over it once for 15 minutes every hour for like six or seven, six hours during the day to, to get this done. And from this point on, now that the compressor just started today, it has to be checked, you know, probably by 8 o'clock this evening for maybe a half hour. So we'll see a little bit of overtime and keeping track of what's going on. But so far, we've been lucky and it looks like we'll be able to get that ice up and going just as, just as we had hoped. So we won't be losing the, we had the potential of loss of $3,000 in ice sales just for that first week. So, and the contract holder did already establish their schedules based on that opening of August 8th. So, you know, besides baking the ice, once they get it up, they have to, you know, paint it and then put more layers on top of that. It's pretty involved process. We've been here a long time, we've seen it and know that it takes a while. So we're in pretty good shape as that goes right now. If this, if this candidate for the full-time seasonal doesn't work out, we have a residency requirement. You have to be a Clinton County resident in order to qualify for the job. That can be waived. I can request it in writing based on that we do not have enough qualified applicants that are applying. If, if this doesn't work out, I'd like to do that in a board agreement that I could request there because we have some people from Vermont that have applied that didn't, that would otherwise qualify. So if this one doesn't work out, I'm gonna go ahead and request a waiver of that residency requirement. Okay?
Running your choice. It's too late.
Yeah, that's kinda like, kinda what it felt like. I wanted you to be aware that I was gonna do that and I was, we didn't know we were lucky enough to maybe have one to show up. So we'll see how, how that works out and we'll go from, we'll go from there. I just wanted to give you another piece of information that I requested and received regarding the status of our, our water plant upgrade project getting started again. I asked our village clerk to talk to Mr. Canulsa today. And he indicated that the village should receive a letter of approval from Mr. Marshall, the professional engineer of the New York State Department of Health. Very shortly, Mr. Marshall, he, he provided Mr. Marshall's email chain to us. And there were three things that, there are actually only two things that he wants to have done. One, the tank level center tied to the auto dialer to alert the water system personnel with sudden drop. And tank level, he wanted a little more information on that. He wants to expect, have an inspection of existing chlorine suction lines and replace if any deficiencies are observed. He agrees to three-week trial period. Once I'll upgrade your complete file by reporting the trial period and official request to the Clinton County Health Department to eliminate your chip. So that's a good thing. We're looking at, once things are running and up, three weeks, give them a report. From this, I'm making the assumption they're gonna approve that. So we'll be, we'll be where everybody wanted to be. So as soon as I receive that letter, I'll, I'll notify you all and let you know that that's where we are. And, you know, we're, we're moving forward. Of course, I'll be coordinating that with our project manager, Mr. Pupke. And I mentioned to trustee Arnold, and I asked last week about the flight pole in the memorial garden out there. And that has been, that has been installed, backup. And the Altech was here today and the cameras are functioning. And they're, you can really, they're high definition. You can really see, see what's going on. So I'm sure you may wanna check it out, but it covers everything. Particularly the stage. If there's anybody doing that to the stage, you're gonna be able to see it right off.
And where are they monitored from?
They have it, have it on a computer. But these are able to, to capture and retain images unlike before that all of them are just in the cameras and they report all these. just in the cameras and they report all these, so it's, there's nobody sitting there monitoring, you know, cameras.
Yeah, they can go back and was recording.
Exactly. If there's an incident, they go back and see what happened. So, okay, that's that. Trustee Arnold, you ready then?
Uh, the only thing I got is on the Chapman Street and Fenton Street, they did the job, light doping and stuff, the county and the village group.
You noticed that Chapman Street went a little farther.
Yes.
We had some extra, uh, blacked out and...
Extra money or blacked out or whatever.
Because the cost, the cost was lower.
Yeah.
It was like fifty dollars a ton versus what normally is sixty-five or seventy. So I went with the recommendation of the super, or excuse me, supervisor of public works. He said he thought that would be best use there, so he's a woman that's riding the street, so that's why I went there.
And I guess they were working on the lights today.
They are working on it. They're pulling, pulling wires.
Pulling wires and stuff and setting the lights, so. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Trustee Arnold, oh, trustee, trustee Derek, I can put my glasses on.
I've got, I've got a couple of things. One that came up today after I was speaking with the trustees and first thing with you, the state revitalization program we have, I don't know if you folks spoke about it at the last meeting when I wasn't here, did you?
No, we had a, we had a resident ask about it and that's why I forwarded you guys all our information.
Okay, yeah, okay. He's, he's since sent a little follow-up to me to pass it on to you folks and it's Sir Ron Malon and he said he found the information on the New York State website. He was very intrigued by it and he said that if, if the village was going to wanna get into this, they'd have to make a, I guess he called it introduction of want or something like that, not apply to the actual grant by October thirteenth. He also further stated to me that if he can get involved in helping write some of this or do something, he would. So I just thought that was important to pass along since we don't normally have citizens coming off the street offering to do grant writing.
Well, if you, you got, you had the email essentially gave you all the dates of all of the workshops and videos and that wouldn't be for citizens, that would be for municipal officials. Certainly any input they can give you.
Yeah.
But that, the grant writing itself is gonna have to fall on our shoulders and that's why they have the workshops and if you can't do the workshops, they have the webinar, which is also, you could just, you know, like we did for some of the other trainments we got.
Did he have any specific items in mind or?
No, he just thought, you know, another revitalization grant to us would be good. All the businesses could take advantage of it. Yeah, he wouldn't come in until after the process where somebody from our municipality got involved and said, yeah, we'll take this on.
So do you guys, Derek, are any of you expecting any, wanting to do the webinar or workshop or? I mean, you and Benny were on the development committee, so that's why I said it to you. I didn't know if you were interested in doing that.
I'm not right at the moment.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where, we either, you have to learn the process or we'll wait, have to wait till next year. That's, that's, I mean, it looks really exciting, eighty million dollars, that's spread across the whole state and it goes fast. And like you say, there's some pretty tight guidelines on October's, just to send in your intention to apply, you know, and there's a whole process for that, so that's, that's where we are. So, okay, well, good, thank you.
The second thing I've got is, I didn't hear much about this until recently, is we're gonna be sending our blast police cruisers off to be decommissioned, unbranded or whatever else you wanna call it, take the stripes off and, and take the master box out of the trunk and whatever else lights off the roof. I'm gonna follow this with a motion, but I wanna take this vehicle off our books. I think at this time that we don't get any other, another vehicle on our books, the simple fact of the cost of the maintenance, the cost of any major repairs, the cost of continuing insurance, gas and whatever else. I think we can do a better job with the vehicles that we have already and I, I would like to have this vehicle sold and the proceeds, the money, we put into John Bernard's truck, have the rusty body taken off and buy a, either used flatbed state box for it or a used pickup box and Johnny at some point this winter could do the bodywork, put new rocker panels on it and whatever, and to make that a better running vehicle. So here's my motion, is I would like, after the vehicle is done being rebranded, I would like to put it up for bid sale.
I'll second that.
Um, I think that's a good idea. I don't know how much we're gonna get for that car, but we never seem to have a little bit of luck selling things, you know, to get what normal places get, but on the other hand...
Police cruiser, you probably won't get much for it anyhow.
Yeah. But the point is, we should have enough money in, from, from that sale to not only make the suggestive repairs on the, on the old mine truck or whatever that truck was, which is a nice heavy-duty truck and I, I anticipate we could get another five to six years on it, and also do some bodywork on the two pickup trucks that we have, the two Ford trucks, a sore plant in the, um, superintendent's truck.
Over the rear wheel wells, yes.
Yeah, the rust and the couple dents and stuff. But I think we can take care of that all this winter and get everything, so we'll have three good trucks and then we'll have what's left of the Drangle and I, I think we can make it work pretty easily and have a little better control over the, over the fleet this way too.
Couple years down the road when we know how, hopefully by then, how Pfizer has affected us, we can look at the whole situation again, maybe Brian get a new truck and we can pass his truck on to somebody else and, you know, something like that. But it just goes along with, with my thoughts of not spending any money and keeping, keeping the money.
What were we gonna do with the vehicle once it?
Ten years left by the village, we're gonna have another good vehicle.
You mean the other village?
You know how things happen around here, when things disappear, they're like, all of a sudden it builds up, breaks down. I mean, this is, the cost of this, which is zero versus buying a new vehicle, which is thirty-five thousand, forty thousand? I don't know.
So could we put a, a motion on, I'm not opposed to selling it, 'cause, but I don't wanna give it away either.
Could we put a minimum bid in?
Could we put a minimum bid if we don't get at least, what, say five thousand? Let me keep it?
I don't know if you're gonna get that much for it. I, I did some research on Edmunds and those and it looks like they're like roughly about six, seven thousand for a civilian one, but they, they deduct if it's...
Appreciate quite a bit.
Taxi cab or, or police cruisers. And I'm, I'm guessing you're probably looking at three to four thousand, but the thing is, it's the, it's the potential future expense.
That's not gonna be, that's not gonna be sufficient to, three or four thousand would be sufficient to, to build a new flatbed or state bed truck.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I, I don't know, I think it will be. If we do the work ourselves and...
I know, but then you're taking, that's cost. You can't make believe that's not a cost.
It's not an additional cost.
Certainly.
You haven't done it on overtime.
That work wasn't there. You got other work that you gotta do. Look, I'm just saying, we're, we're taking, taking an asset that possibly, even if you put it in cold storage and even put up on blocks, you're still, it's still available for use thereafter. Matter of fact, well, anyway, but that's what this discussion is.
I mean, what do we use, what do we use now for, say, vote meetings or whatever?
Hybrid, we use the hybrid. Escape, before escape.
Right.
Again, if we have someone going to a meeting and possibly we have somebody else going somewhere out, so we're gonna have to pay minors. It's just, you know, I, I, I just don't wanna rush into this just so that, you know, we might be able to, like you say, sell it for two or three thousand dollars.
Well, we'll get more than that, but I mean, the point of it is, is I've seen this, I've been watching this for some time. We decide to replace a vehicle, we've got a scheduled depreciation, say it's a pickup truck, ten years. And the reason we picked ten years is we figured we could run it efficiently and cost-effectively for ten years. Then we sell it and we get a decent trade-in amount on it, only we don't trade them in. And we got a new truck. Well, what's been happening is they've been taking that truck that was supposed to be, that was budgeted to be replaced and they've just been keeping it and just basically using it till it, it ends up going to the scrapyard. And, and I don't think that's, it's going to people that didn't have vehicles assigned to them before.
I just hate to see us, if we're only gonna get three or four thousand dollars for it, I agree, I don't believe that's gonna fix it, another pickup up or whatever, but if we have, I mean, like you said, even if we put it in cold storage and don't give it to anybody, you know, just keep it in the garage, we have a backup, we have something, I mean...
We've got backups now. I, I thought of this, we've got...
Well, the water plant, the water plant, Drango is being worked on.
Right.
So guess what that backup is? Is John Bernard's truck.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a truck.
Well, he never had a truck before anyway. He just took whatever we surplus and now he's got a truck. Same with the water plant. That's a relatively new phenomenon for them too.
Drango's relatively new to have, as you pointed out, you weren't even aware they put chlorine in the water at the thing, they have to go up there. I mean, it's not like a luxury, this isn't a luxury item, it's a necessity. But again, the whole point is if you, you know, you still can go about if, if that kind of an expensive, you say it's only two thousand dollars, we certainly could find that in the budget and still have a vehicle that potentially is gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars if we need a vehicle, if there's a, you know, if there's a rack or something. We have an asset that runs well, it's in good shape.
If we really got in a bind, and I strongly question the, the vitalness of having some of these vehi, some of these departments that have vehicles now that didn't have them before. If you leave that...
What are you talking about?
Well, we're not saying give it to a department.
No, but if you put it in storage, I guarantee somebody will be driving it. I guarantee it won't last five minutes in there.
How can?
They'll put it on the road and it'll be some...
How can they put it on the road without...
I don't like to argue about it. If we need a car...
They can't put it on the road unless we approve. You know that.
It's on the road right now. It's got license plates on it, right?
It's being fixed.
Yes, I know that.
So, but it can be, look, it, it can be whatever we want it to be. It can't, it's not just gonna spontaneously be assigned.
I think if we get, to answer the question one last time, or Dale, if, if we really get in a bind, we have to have a vehicle. We've got two pickup trucks that are, I think, seven years old. They're scheduled to be replaced in three years, you know, the Brian's and the other. If we really got in a bind, we could accelerate that one or two years and pass one of those trucks down, if we need it.
It's been thirty...
Well, we're gonna do it anyway, it'd just be advancing it a year or two, if, if we had to, and I don't think we have to.
I just hate to see the village give, give a good working vehicle away for, like you said, three or four thousand dollars.
Well, we've done that before.
Let's put a five thousand dollar...
It's probably cost us forty or fifty thousand dollars to do that, take these vehicles that had some value and just, just basically throw them out after two or three years of use when they didn't even, weren't needed in the first place. This has been going on the last fifteen, twenty years. Take a, a dump truck or something that's worth eight or nine thousand dollars and a year later it's, it's being towed out to Arnold's to be scrapped or something. I could, I could give you seven or eight examples like that in this village. Have something, one day it's a police car, we take it off to sell it and the mechanic says the frame's no good, crush it. Day before it was being used as a police car, I was a Dodge diplomat we had and it's just been like that.
When was that?
Huh?
How long ago was that?
That was when I was mayor before, but we've had them since then. I could, I could give you dozens, all these years they've been doing this.
Okay. The motion is on the table. If I understand, you have a restricted motion.
I would like to take, I'd like to take this cruiser and take it off our books and put it up for sale and use the money to work on John Bernard's truck, using the rust over the, uh, underwells of at least Brian's truck, so that the whole bed doesn't rot out. And have a minimum bid put on it.
If it doesn't?
And go from there. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, you have a second. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Trustee Bernard.
Name?
Trustee Derek.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Anything else, sir?
Hold on, Arsen, Scott, question?
The minimum bid was stated.
What's a minimum bid?
Said we were going to establish a minimum bid.
When, when does that happen? Usually that happens in the motion.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
I can't advertise without anything. I mean, we would have to have a minimum bid. Do I have authorization to advertise?
Yeah, the advertising is gonna be how much? Six hundred?
No.
It depends how long we put it in. I need authorization to advertising, but how long do you want me to advertise?
Okay, what do we want? Let's have the motion for, trustee Derek, since you started, what, what would your minimum bid be? What would you make a motion, minimum bid be?
I'd like to look at the book value and then deduct for it to be a police cruiser, you know, and I can easily do that online, I just can't do it tonight, so that's what I would like to do for the next meeting. The car isn't ready anyways. Hasn't gone down to Wells Communications, as far as I know, nothing's been done with it, so I'd, I'd like to table...
The motion's already been passed.
Right, no, I said I'd like to table any pricing or anything to go with it till the next meeting, so we can look into it and make a legitimate minimum bid.
I'm a clerk, so there won't be any advertising, there won't be anything else. This is, that's that. Now, we're going to continue the process of decommissioning it and then the board will come up with a, a minimum bid and authorization to advertise for sale there.
Is there a price for just decommissioning on this, Tom?
Pardon me, sir?
Is there a price for decommissioning this?
Yeah, probably about eight hundred dollars.
So eight hundred dollars from Wells, I guess, to take the radios out and stuff, which we have to do whether we keep it or sell it.
And two hundred and fifty dollars to take the details. It's about a thousand bucks to decommission it.
Aren't we gonna get from the state some kind of...
Yeah, municipal restructuring fund should pay for it. I don't think they're gonna pay for it if we sell it, so the cost of that, we're gonna end up with a profit of about twelve hundred bucks, when all said and done, which is...
Well, let's hope they, they do pay for it and we'll see if they do then.
Well, if we sell it, they won't. They only pay for our costs and our, and our cost is whatever it is. If we do something to it and then sell it, we don't have any cost. We have a profit, so there'll be no reimbursement on that. Okay, anything else, sir?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Daffa, no, trustee Bernard?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, I did some I E E P updates here. I attended the, the annual meeting in Syracuse a week and a half ago and it was probably the most beneficial meeting that I've been to over the years with these things. I talked to a lot of people from different communities that are in the same program that we are and I feel that I now have a, a pretty good understanding of how the whole program works. To that end, I prepared a memo with a suggestion for, for discussion tonight, that we adopt a new policy for how we distribute the money in the I E E P fund. And I've tried to give some background so that everybody can understand how it works. Basically, we're mandated to participate in an energy conservation program by the power authority and the munis, the municipal electric utility association, most of them, signed on to this organization that we have now, which is the, the I E E P in Syracuse and then they contract out to Honeywell to do the actual estimates and pricing of the different jobs and they have an accounting firm that, that pays out the money and keeps track of it all. And so that way, we don't have to do any, any work on it ourselves, like Arsen doesn't have to cut checks for all these different reimbursements, it comes right out of I E E P. Now, we had been getting revenues of approximately seventy-five hundred dollars a month, give or take a few hundred, I think. And again, these monies don't come to us through our sen's books, they come through, they go directly to I E E P. With the Pfizer plant closing, we anticipate that we could be reduced on those revenues about three thousand dollars a month. This, this money is generated by a thousandth of a cent per kilowatt hour used, so you can see the less kilowatt hours that you use, less electricity, less funds are generated for this program. So with that in mind, I kinda broke this thing down into components. The first part, we have insulation program, people can get help on getting their houses insulated. Now, what we had been doing is we have, they request to the village for assistance and we would call up our Honeywell representative and he'd go out, do a site inspection, do an estimate on what they anticipated it was gonna cost, and then he would submit it back to the village and say that he concurred that it was fit in with our guidelines of, of what we pay for and this is how much it is. If it was under, I think it was five thousand?
Five thousand.
If it was under five thousand, the program administrator of the village just paid for it. It used to be the village administrator.
The mayor would approve it, not the program administrator.
Oh, that's right, that's right. The mayor would approve it if it was under five thousand, if it was over five thousand, the board would, would vote on it. Okay, I got it now. So what I'm proposing on the insulation program is that we have a cap of fifteen hundred dollars per project and one project per customer until all first-time applicants have been funded.
That sounds pretty good.
Second thing, what I call electricity reduction, this would be like new lighting, energy...
this would be like, um, new lighting, energy lights in buildings, electric motors, pumps, et cetera. Again, not the village, this is commercial and customers that we have. And I would propose a fifty percent match up to thirty-five hundred dollars. And I ran this by some of the people at the conference and they thought, they liked the idea of that match. You know, if somebody wants to put in all new lights in a warehouse or something, we'll match them, but why aren't we just giving them thirty-five hundred dollars? But they can get up to thirty-five hundred if they do the whole project, say for up to seven thousand, they can recover. Now, the third thing is, the village municipal projects would have priority over everything else. It'd be like, uh, street lighting, energy reduction pumps, things for here in the rec center. The reason for that is that those projects benefit every single person in the village by cutting the actual cost of energy used that's paid for by all of us. Uh, the fourth component is a STAR energy program. And this is, uh, you pick up these brochures in the office to apply for it. And all it is, it's a rebate on various electronic devices that you buy, clothes washers, dryers, refrigerators, air conditioners, dishwashers. If it has an energy STAR thing, it's eligible for a rebate. All you have to do is fill out this form, attach your receipt for the appliance you bought and a copy of your most, one of your current electric bills from the village to show that you are an electric customer of ours. And you mail it into the address here and they send you the check directly. So we don't even, aren't even involved in that.
Does that have windows on there too, Tom?
Yeah, windows are twenty-five hours a piece.
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, that program is kinda self-contained, but it does use the money that we generate out of our, you know, formerly seventy-five hundred dollars a year. So we keep about a ten thousand dollar balance in that account. We try not to go below that on approved projects, 'cause that takes care of the STAR program. So anyway, the program administered and project approvals by, I'm proposing that the village I E P coordinator can take care of that. Well, I'm currently that, but I don't intend to do this forever. I mean, eventually it'll go to somebody else. But this had been done before by the mayor and then, if, but if desired, you guys want, you can vote on all these projects. Because there's only about a dozen a year.
It was by the mayor and the board.
Yeah, I know that now. So, she was like coordinating the program or something.
She just, she would send the information to Honeywell.
So the way it's working now is if someone wants to, I got a request today. Someone in the village, it's a village electric customer, wants insulation help or energy stuff, call the village office and they'll pass the name and phone number on to me and I'll call them up and hook them up with Dave Trudeau for an appointment. They can arrange it between themselves when it's convenient for him to come over to their house. He comes up from Saranac Lake, I guess. So he was here last week, but I think he's on vacation this week. And he'll come up and then he'll come back. I think he comes back to me as the coordinator and says what the project is. And I've been holding off on this till we establish, if you wanna go along with these funding amounts that I proposed, before I tell anybody what they're gonna get.
Right.
And right now, we're kinda set for two thousand seventeen. The projects have already been previously approved and they're just waiting for it to be done, to pay off. But we have enough money to cover what's been approved so far. I went over to the mayor, a few that we have straggling in, and they'll be under the new guidelines because they didn't have their numbers set yet. So they'll be after the first of the year. And again, this is predicated on how the money builds up in our account at I E P. You know, how much is going to, because if it isn't there, we can't pay something.
Yeah, correct. Okay, so, like you said, you said we usually try to keep ten thousand in account for basically wherever we want.
No, it's for the STAR program.
Oh, for the STAR.
Just for the STAR, 'cause that's, we don't see that, that's automatic. People just send in to-
By your projections, say we've got ninety thousand dollars this year with Pfizer, how much of that do we actually use?
Well, I can tell you exactly.
Just about. To use it, that's what every mass probably does. And use it up. And I think you're kinda misspoke when you- Arson sends a check to I E P. It doesn't just appear at I E P.
Right, okay. We have to send it.
He actually has to take care of that.
It's called utility bills.
Right.
Okay. So has there been people that haven't got it in the past?
No.
Why are we regulating?
Because, I'll let him answer his question, I mean, again. They, when someone wanted their home insulated, you know, the average cost probably would be around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars if we would pay for that installation. And, you know, because of the energy savings, that's what we would do. And the proposal is that we limit that to fifteen hundred based on the fact that, if I'm reading this right, that our revenues obviously are gonna be reduced once Pfizer shuts down. So I know, are you proposing that we wait until Pfizer shuts down or we start this?
No, I'd start it now, because anything we save now will build up in that account anyway. It's not like we're gonna lose it.
Right.
Just to give you an idea-
Carry over if we don't use it.
Oh, yeah, never, it doesn't go away.
It doesn't go away, it's there. But if you're not, if it isn't a robust program, you get dinged. You gotta use your money, you can't-
No, no, we're not-
Can't hoard it.
No.
You can't like, okay, we're dirty out and then end up with a balance of sixty thousand dollars at the end of the year.
Right.
Because the village is-
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Why is that?
No, we're no danger of that, what do you mean?
No.
You're gonna say something like, "I'll do a dozen of it, so a year anyway."
Yes, I do think.
I have this spreadsheet that Jean had made, we brought it up to date a little more. But it's, some of these were insulation, like, one of them here was seventy-two hundred dollars and we paid it.
It was a business, right?
That one was, but there was, uh-
That was approved by the board.
All these are approved. There's one individual here, sixty-nine hundred and forty dollars was paid for insulation of a house. Another one was twenty-six hundred dollars for a house.
That's pretty average, twenty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, but the one was, like I say, it was over seven thousand dollars.
But again, that was brought forward by the board and approved by the board.
I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just saying to give you an idea of the scope of what some of these things can be, you know. Yeah, all this is above board, it's, you know, it's what the policy was at the time.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on why we're, I guess, why we're rationing it if we've never had a problem before.
Because we're gonna have a drastic reduction in income on this pretty soon. And if we don't, it just means that we can approve more projects. Now, another thing I found out with this, as I was looking at it, was it seems like most of the village isn't aware of this program. Nobody's fault really, but I mean, like, one person on here that was aware has put in for three different personal projects. No problem with that, but there's other people that didn't even know about it. And if everybody-
There are three locations, right?
Yeah, three different houses, yeah, for one person, yeah.
Well, no. There's three separate electric accounts. That, so in other words, they have an apartment building, we do that. They have another residential, they just have a third apartment.
Right, yeah.
So what we're doing is servicing the, what we're supposed to be doing, we're servicing these older things, making them more energy efficient.
Right, right.
And so, it's not like one person is sucking up. I mean, they're investing in our community. They're putting, you know, rental properties out there, they're bringing people in and we're helping it, so I-
I guess what I'm saying is, do you wanna, you wanna do three or four projects a year for seven, five, six, whatever the prices are? Or do you wanna spread it around and get maybe, I don't know, fifteen, twenty people be able to help out? Because don't forget, out of this whole amount of money that comes in, I think last year we had roughly eighty-six thousand dollars. But the village took out like thirty-one thousand for the, or, let's see.
We did the water plant.
Right, and the water plant, the turbine pumps. And then there's a charge for this too. I think we pay, the I E P, I think we pay them about twenty percent to manage this program. Comes out of that gross amount.
Well, that was my question. Have we refused anybody?
Yeah, oh, yeah. We got a whole bunch of people queuing up on waiting. I mean, there's probably seven or eight that we don't have money for this year that'll put them in next year if we can fit them in. Yeah.
That's what I was, I mean, that's what I, that was my question.
Well, I guess what we could do is-
You know, have we turned anybody away because we haven't had the funds?
We could revisit this next year at the end of a year and see if we did have, like, all kinds of extra money left over, which I don't think we're going to, because-
More and more people are getting to know this program and stuff and they're-
Right. And in the village, the houses are getting older also.
Well, I've got a, I've got a business, a commercial business, that's got an estimate for lighting for almost ten thousand dollars. That's two months of revenue. It's almost three months of revenues on this reduced amount that we're gonna be getting, so.
If we put on hold an energy efficient project for this building, thirty thousand dollars-
Yeah.
That we have to revisit again.
Well, that'll be coming probably off the top of next year.
Well, you'll recall, you thought you'd hit thirty thousand, you can't. They only qualified it for the fourteen thousand dollars. So you gotta come up with sixteen thousand somewhere else. You can't just take, you can't just say, "I want this to be an I E P project." Honeywell's gotta come in and say, "There's an energy savings, we can pay this much."
We already had half the project set aside because the second half was coming out of this budget. Am I right or wrong?
You took it out.
Took it out of this year's budget. Wasn't there fifteen thousand dollars last year to match, make the thirty thousand?
There was money in the budget, yeah.
Okay, there was. So we have the fifteen thousand there and we'd have to see what I E P could do for us. So.
Okay. My question.
Anyway, so, I guess what would be the best, I mean, at least from my standpoint, is if everybody thinks this is a good way to go, we have a motion, Mayor, to adopt this as a policy for I E P?
Yeah, if you'd like to make that motion, uh-